Our prayer, everyone please stand in, keep standing for Ms. Patricia Lane, our pledge of allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone, let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this opportunity for our being here. We pray for our city, we pray for the city officials, we pray for every employee. God, today, we pray the serenity prayer, that you would grant us the serenity accepted things that we cannot change. God, grant us the courage to change things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. We pray that you would continue to be with us in this city. We pray a hedge of protection around us, in Jesus's name, amen.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'd like to see the clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt. Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary. Councilor Willis.
We have ten out of ten presence, that's enough for a quorum. We're gonna start first with the first bid opening we talked about. Is that my little mug on this morning? Okay. Our first bid opening, West Memphis Utilities, talked about the remote worker residency recruitment campaign at the Office of Economic Development. Was there any more questions about that, or?
Mayor, of course, I'd like to table it for two weeks, have a meeting, go over all the different scenarios of of how individuals will be incentivized to move here, and then how does the city, over periods of time, recoup that investment that we're making?
I second.
Or do you wanna?
I haven't had a chance to really look at it.
For me, the question, this was just a bid opening, we're not trying to hide anything from you. All the procedures for bidding this work out.
But approval today would be?
Whatever the mayor wants us to do. To me, it comes under, you know, something the mayor, not the city council.
I'll second that motion.
I'd like to say, it's, you know, if approved, it's authorizing the expenditure of sixty-three thousand. And I would just, before I authorize spending sixty-three thousand, like to hear the total plan? That's just me.
But again, it goes back to, how many of these can we bring to you? Because we sign other contracts for feasibility study of Slackwater Harbor. That involves spending city money.
That's the reason I asked if we attend more meetings, or let us know when you're having them, so we can attend. So we can learn what everything's about. That's all I'm asking. Okay.
Will two weeks hurt anything, Mr. Wendish? Will tabling it for two weeks, will that hurt?
It would not, except I wanted to be clear on the principle that I was operating.
Right, right.
I would be in agreement with Ms. Council Mohammed, because we just got our packets Wednesday. And trying to get through this packet in a day and a half.
There was a bid opening for a building at the substation.
Yeah, I see that.
And no, no, again, that's what we did, we brought you a bid opening for work, other work with utilities, and it's approved without a meeting, so I'm just, how do I know which ones?
Again, and I don't, I mean, no disrespect at all, we know what those are, we can go by and see them every day, we know what the return on that investment is. We don't on this, from our standpoint. You know, I'm gonna offer you ten thousand dollars to move here, but how does the taxpayer recoup some, if not all of that investment? I don't know how that's gonna happen.
We just say, in economic development, we always, you know, we go out and work on these programs, we do programs, like, we go, as an example, we're going to Atlanta next month with the state to recruit site selectors. We invite them to a ballgame. Again, that costs money. I can't, we're planting a seed, hoping to develop our relationship with site developers to come here. I mean, that, to me, it's the same thing, but yeah.
I think from my standpoint, which, everyone, please forgive me, I've been ill for the past week or so. I would just like to, I haven't had a chance to look at anything, to be honest with you. And you're saying that it's not gonna hurt to table it for two weeks. We're not rejecting you whatsoever. And I would like to, now that I'm agreeing with Tracy, Lord forbid.
So do we have, so do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, I just, I would just like to-
But it was for something differently, though?
No, it's for the same thing, actually.
Just to table this, for two weeks, have a meeting?
So we can have a meeting.
Okay.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
Dr. Bruce, give me the answer question. Well, I'm gonna run the meeting, so we get that, Council McCrum.
Okay.
I didn't have any issue with it, knowing what was going on. I do respect that the council, the sixty-three thousand, but we do this all the time, and I definitely wanna get that in. And I guess, I'm saying this, and this, and I want everyone to understand, I'm not saying this toward the council. But I saw him as counsel sixteen years. Everything my predecessor said, and add, you all went privy to nothing. And this council has been more open to this, I mean, this mayor has been more open to this council to give you all all the information you want. And I will continue doing it if that's needed. But sometimes, when I'm given a vision, or I'm trying to make our city move forward, it's impossible for me to come by and say, everybody, this is what's going on. But I do understand you all have your place in this council, where you have to approve laws, you have to approve budgets and those different things. So I respect that, so if it just takes two weeks, I have no problem with agreeing and giving you all that time, because there's nothing, man, here, and I've heard that personally, behind closed doors, that this mayor, how this mayor has moved this city farther than it ever been, but now he's trying to hide something. I don't know whether this, these type of comments and words is coming from. But let me, let's all, I guess, get on the boat and see what's going, and start to support, instead of trying to tear one down, thinking because it hadn't been one way, as things are different. So, once again, I definitely support what Ms. Mohammed is saying. I want you all to have the opportunity to be able to look at everything. So I'm gonna ask, that we just gonna table it for the next two weeks, and we move forward?
And Mayor, let me reiterate, it's because I have not had an opportunity to really look at anything. I think it's a beautiful vision, but I would just like to see it, and if two weeks is not gonna hurt, if two weeks was going to hurt, then I would just be blind and go ahead and vote. But if, since two weeks is not hurting, that would give me and maybe others an opportunity to look at it. I didn't ask to get sick, it just happened.
Alright. So, can I get a, I'm gonna have to be, can I get a motion and second to table for two weeks?
I'll make a motion.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's table for two weeks to give everyone an opportunity, and then we will, within those two weeks, now that this table, what day can we make right now that this council will be back to go through this plan?
Next meeting, that's what, the next meeting.
What the next mean? I mean, I'm, it-
To have a workshop, you mean?
Yeah, have a workshop, because wait two weeks and no one is here, or we just get it back and say, we have it here. We wanna a date that more can come back and present and answer any questions of how this could work.
Tuesday at four?
Tuesday at four. This Tuesday at four o'clock. Then Council Chambers. Alright, West Memphis Utilities Recommendation for Equipment Contract Award. Can we get a motion and second to approve that?
So moved.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Now we got eight bid openings right now. One that we do need to talk about, I'm gonna ask you first of all, the takeoff number nine, which is the vector, disease control. Take that off the agenda, because it's down here in O two, it's the O two one, so we don't wanna just approve something without being able to look at it. The first seven bid openings are pretty much normal, and we got one is the eighth, and I just want everyone to understand what the eight, the number, the number eight deals. So can I get a motion and second to approve one through seven?
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, number eight is the Roberta Jackson Neighborhood Center lease. And it is the same lease from the last four years, it's time for it to be renewed. And the only thing that's gonna be added to it, just the only thing, it says, the property and one half of the building located at thirteen, thirteen hundred Pope, West Memphis, Arkansas, the tenant and its employees may have access to the additional half of the building every week from six AM to two PM, Tuesday through Thursday, unless it's an election year, and the additional half is used for polling sites.
Do we have that?
I make a motion, we table it?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Willis.
Say what?
I said, go ahead, I was saying something, but you go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, before we get, I know your motion, but what was your?
Do we have that in our package? Are you gonna give us a copy of it?
The lease?
The lease.
It was attached to the bids.
Okay, okay, I got it, okay. Like I said, I haven't looked at anything, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, they're in the discussion before we get back to, oh, on the lease?
Yeah, the only question I had was, or like I say, it specified there were no repairs, which was great. Item nine B, it was in the previous lease agreement, that's changed. I'm just curious, have we already given them our list for this term of lease? We're supposed to give them a list of items that are in there that belong strictly to the city, they cannot be removed out for any reason, whatever. But it just says we're supposed to furnish them with a list.
Okay.
And soon it's been done, so.
Sure, Kenneth, did you wanna speak on that, that part of the lease?
City Attorney is preparing, so he may get that.
Okay, City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, I think the only changes were about them using the building during that period of time, and the price went up as a result, the rental amount went up. I can't remember what the amount was before, but I know it went up this time. Those are the two changes. As far as the list of items, I mean, I don't know whether that's been prepared or done, that's not something that I know anything about as far as what's in there, so that would be something, hopefully somebody else will be doing.
I see the price change went from eight hundred to eleven hundred.
Correct, yes. Yeah, he just said that landlords should provide tenant with a written list of all movable equipment or other items within the premises that landlord owns. Just so the tenant would know that, you know, owner knows our business, that they're property, it belongs to the city of West Memphis. So I'm assuming that admitted will be then carried out.
And this lease is up on April the first of twenty twenty-four, which that is another couple of weeks, so now.
I made my motion to table it, and I have a second?
Second.
Alright, call the rolls, City Clerk. Hold, hold, excuse me, Councilman Monday, are you making that motion to table indefinitely or two weeks?
Indefinitely.
Okay.
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
No.
Councilor Crum?
No.
Councilor Harris?
No.
Councilor Holt?
No.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed?
I'm gonna pass, I haven't got a chance to look at it.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Mary?
Yes.
Councilor Willis? Five yeses. Four noes.
We have five yeses to table, and four noes that mean that the vote to table it has failed, so.
So, based off of that vote, City Attorney will notify that tenant to go ahead and get their stuff and start moving out?
No, no, I mean, the table, the lease, it failed.
I know, but you said table indefinitely.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be run back up?
The lease, yeah.
We need to notify this tenant, they need to move out.
Yeah, but it failed to ta-
I thought we approved the table.
No, no, it failed, it failed.
Okay, alright, I apologize.
It failed, okay. They failed the table, they're sold now.
I make a motion, we approve the lease as presented.
Second.
Alright, Miss Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
No.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Pass.
Councilor Mohammed?
Pass on it.
Excuse me?
I'm passing.
Councilor Monday?
No.
Councilor Mary? Councilor Willis?
Yes.
Five yeses. Two noes.
We have five yeses and two noes, but as Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes to approve it. So it passes. Alright, we have the minutes. Were there the corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve this minute.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion and a second. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Old business, R one.
Uh, R one is a resolution, a resolution to approve the purchase agreements between the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and James Harrison, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements on behalf of the city of West Memphis.
Okay, I have the authority, I think you all had gave me permission when we talked in pre-council, to go ahead and do that, correct?
Yes, sir, and City Attorney can interject, but at the last meeting, we approved the option for you to purchase those properties prior to a specific date, which was, I think, April twenty-ninth, April thirtieth. I just think this was left on here by error.
I think so also. I think, you know, the option agreement that's down under permission request is what we're really talking about with regard to these properties right now.
Now, just to clarify, City Attorney, this would be tabled indefinitely, and they would bring up the issue on the fee, not a fee, but a, I guess, earnest money?
Yeah, the option agreements, the option agreements that we had before, or at the previous meeting, had no dollar amount in for the option itself. And in order for it to be an enforceable contract, there has to be what's called consideration. And that consideration is you're paying somebody to have the option to purchase that property. So now, the option agreements have, I believe, a five percent of what the purchase price is in the portion for the option. That was determined by Mr. Bowman, that amount, so. But, but there's an amount in there, and that's what I needed in the option.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, Counsel, if I have my permission to speak, I actually went back and added a dollar amount, as Mr. Attorney Stevenson is correct, of five percent per property to serve as a portion of earnest money. Once the contract is completed, and once the title search is completed, as well as setting a closing date, then we'll get the remaining ninety-five percent to Mr. Harris. He's provided me this week with a, as a follow-up in the status update, he's provided me a W nine, so we can complete this transaction, so I'll be working with Mr. Kenneth on getting that done, as well as we provided him with applications for the West Memphis Housing Authority, so his tenants can find adequate housing.
So, make sure I understand it, based off of that, it's two thousand two hundred fifty dollars would be the amount that you would render as earnest money, if I remember correctly. Fifty-five was total?
Yes, it's roughly about two thousand five hundred or something, somewhere in the ballpark.
So do we need to approve the amendment for the earnest money?
Well, I mean, if you approve, just approve the resolution, I guess, because you already given me the authority to do it.
This is where you're gonna pick that up?
Yeah, the option is gonna be on this back end, unless we want to make a motion to add the option to the resolution, and just to-
Of course, I was just thinking, for purposes of clarity, we just go ahead and table R one indefinitely, and approve permission request of five percent for a total of two thousand two hundred fifty dollars?
That's fine, I mean, okay, well, can I get, go ahead.
I got a question, because I, I remember us talking about what we were gonna pay for those properties. And I know I spoke on some of that property, I thought was higher than what it should be.
Actually, I went back and I researched it. What the county has for the appraised value is actually nineteen thousand two hundred. We're gonna pay nineteen thousand six hundred. The only difference between that particular property and the rest of those properties in the area is that, when I went back to look at the structure, they have that actually as a frame-built house. And when you look at it, it almost looks as if it's a manufactured home, but it's actually a framed house, framed-built house. And this goes back to the research I did for the moratorium. Frame-built houses cost more than mobile homes, and they last much longer. So that's why the value of that particular property is higher than those other properties that have mobile homes, because it's actually a framed-built house.
Okay, thank you. So, do we need a motion to table?
Yeah, just see the motion and the second, if I can, to table R one?
So moved.
Thank it.
Indefinitely, indefinitely. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is tabled. We're gonna go down to R two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Clerk to Execute a Historical Preservation Easement on behalf of the city of West Memphis, that was tabled on February the fifteenth until March the seventh. I know it was some previous discussion, and with the council, and I didn't necessarily know what direction that was going in.
Well, I would table it. At the last presentation, of course, when we tabled, we missed the holiday for the grant application. I still think we need to bring this building into play with the new police station that we've already been discussing on how we're gonna handle the financing, so we can take care of all of this at one time, and not just a building at a time. So, I'd love to be able to see, just table this indefinitely, prior to May first, get with the council, present a plan to take care of some of the long-term goes, that you had, a funding mechanism, so if it's something we need to get on the ballot, we have plenty of time to get that done. So, Mayor, I make a motion, we table R two indefinitely.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is tabled. Alright, we have a reading of an ordinance to amend twenty-five sixty-four, establishing water rates for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes. As read for a second time, I'm gonna ask for a motion and second to afford to suspend the rules. The place is on its third reading?
So moved.
Thank it.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Patricia, what you say? Okay, a third reading, it's an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-five sixty-four, establishing water rates for the city of West Memphis, and for the, and for other purposes, it's on this third reading. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Are they in the discussion?
I just wanna make sure, this says second reading?
This is third reading.
I know, but it says second, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
That's, that's trying to look at the clerk, okay?
Alright.
He just read it, he read it three times, just now.
Okay.
Alright, hearing no discussion, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, will you get that ordinance and number, please?
Ordinance number two-six-six-four, two-six-six-four.
Now, ordinance number is two-six-six-four. Okay, I have a, the second reading of an ordinance to appeal certain ordinances of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas. Council McKenna, did you wanna kinda?
I think, just let him read it a second time, I'm gonna add that fifth ordinance and bring it back to you.
Okay.
I think, Councilor Cat, can you give a short description of what this actually is pertaining to?
One of the ordinances was a mandatory retirement age of sixty-five.
Right.
And then there was a second ordinance that had a mandatory retirement age of seventy. There was an ordinance that required that you must live in West Memphis. And then there was an ordinance that required that you must live in Critney County. A lot of our employees, that, that don't fit any of those four ordinances.
Right.
And then there was a fifth, I was reading the other day, I'll bring it back to you, that had some language I didn't think the council would, would wanna remain, in fact, but I will email that to everybody, but those are those four.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we're gonna move down to new business, and I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Mohammed, will you make that motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion at R one, O one, and O two. What about O three? We're gonna table that after we-
I think we talked about moving that from the agenda completely.
Yeah.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that R one, O one, and O two be read by title only.
Can you get a second?
Thank it.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, City Attorney?
Alright, R one is a resolution recognizing the order appointing Mayor Marco McClendon as itinerant ambassador of the city of Getaway, Republic of Senegal.
Hearing that read, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion?
Mayor, if I may, simply add to the resolution, that even though it is an honor, and I know what your intentions are, if there are any expenses that you foresee coming through this approval, that you will notify the council prior to.
Sure, I have no problem with that. Any other discussion?
And you did say you didn't foresee anything?
I don't, I don't foresee, I didn't, I didn't foresee, the only thing I did foresee is one, I visited over there. I went to some of the hospitals and different things, I have talked with Baptist Hospital, about donating some things. Our father-in-law have some mattresses and stuff that everyone is seeing, and I think in Kenneth's apartment, we still got sanitizers, and gloves, and masks, and different things like that, I mean. Their, their level of poorness makes our level of poorness look like that, I mean, and so I just feel obligated, and I understand to say this, and no offense, but as a black man, I feel coming from that area and what we went through, and that's a port, what we was ported over as slaves here, that it's, I'm obligated to, to do something, to help them, and not spending city money. I understand some of you all may not want your money to go there, but I think what we can help, I think is something that we definitely need to do.
No, we have in the bus, all of us think we should help anybody who we can, regardless of color or anything else. But before, you know, we spend taxpayers' money, we just need to make sure what we're telling people we're doing.
May I, may I iterate something?
Sure, go ahead.
In a, in a previous regime, we, the mayor, I remember the mayor being an ambassador to, I think it was Finland or Denmark. So, there's a precedent already set for that.
Like I said, I don't remember approving it for a previous administration, but that's fine, I have no problem with approving this. It's just, you know, if we're gonna expand, notify the council beforehand.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing now, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Will you get that resolution and number?
Resolution number two-two-nine-seven, two-two-nine-seven.
Two-two-nine-seven. City Attorney, O one?
O one is an ordinance declaring procurement consulting services to be professional services pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated section nineteen dash eleven dash eight oh one, and amending the code of ordinance of the, ordinances of the city of West Memphis.
Alright, I'm gonna ask just to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading.
I thought we were gonna table that for two weeks.
Well, no, I have no problem with it. I just am curious exactly which service are we procuring?
It's for the parts, and they are here, because I wanna give them an opportunity to-
Okay, that'd be great, they're left here, yeah. I make a motion, we suspend the rules, place it on the second reading.
So moved, second letter.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ask for a motion.
Second reading of an ordinance declaring procurement consulting services to be professional services pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated section nineteen dash eleven dash- dash eleven dash eight oh one and amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Memphis.
I'm gonna ask that we suspend the rules and place it on the third reading. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's in the third reading.
Third reading of an ordinance declaring procurement consulting services to be a professional services pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated section nineteen dash eleven dash eight oh one and amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Memphis.
Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
All right, here go discussion. Uh, actually, I kinda wanna give a brief detail and then I'm gonna call them up to kinda speak on it. What we were doing, we were looking at our new potential park, uh, Tiller Rogers. And what we were trying to do was find out, normally when the city, I'm gonna use this as an example, it may be off, but if I wanna go build a house and I go, it's three hundred thousand, I pay three hundred thousand. But normally when they found out that the city of West Memphis, they're gonna charge me six hundred thousand. So what I wanted to get, talk with a procurement company who specialized in turf because when I was in my last meeting, I asked, uh, our architect specifically, what type of turf are our spheres getting? And they asked me, we getting a good grade, but still that don't necessarily answer the question that I was needing. And going out and, and, uh, Ms. Whitney from the former with the, uh, Arkansas Municipal League, she brought these gentlemen to us to be able to possibly answer, answer these questions so that you all and myself are be able to make better decisions on what we doing. Because it may be possible that we may be able to save a whole lot more money than just paying it out. And, and with me not having that knowledge of the experience, I did wanna try to bring someone in so that you all can be equipped with the best information to be able to make those decisions. Because right now, they can say, well, hey, turf field gonna cost four million dollars just throwing it out. But really, well, if we found out what we need and they found out that we got a procurement company, they may come in and say, well, hey, we can get this deal for two million dollars, save us two million. I don't know. And then if it don't, then we just go back to what we know. But definitely, I wanna have the opportunity so these individuals can come and look at and possibly give us more knowledge than I think to myself and maybe some of us may have with doing this. And they just pretty much ask for us to listen to them if we approve it, and then you all make the decision to go from there. Ms. Ford, will you come forward, please? Director Jones, will you, you come up to us while?
Good afternoon. I wanna thank Mayor McClendon and the council for the opportunity. This is Mark Jones, my business partner. Uh, let me give you a little bit of background before we get into this ordinance, and I think that'll give you some insight into what we're actually requesting. It's good to see you, Mr. Jones. Uh, so my background is I served on the Springdale City Council, was elected in two thousand sixteen. So I've been in everyone's seat here. Uh, the mayor, after I sold my business, he asked me to come work for him as his chief of staff. So I'm in charge of our city budget, our bond programs. We just passed a two-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollar bond program that I oversee. I've heard y'all had passed a bond program, uh, for your parks and recs. So I wanna tell you what happened in Springdale, which led to Whitney connecting us with you. So I have a business background that I was bringing into our city government. And I quickly realized as the chief of staff, and I've also worked in the Arkansas Senate as well, so I've, I've got budgeting background on state and local. So I realized quickly that, um, even though some of us disagree on things in government, what we all agree on is government overspending is not a good thing. And so, um, I knew that as we were walking through the process of, uh, replacing the turf and the lights at our ball fields in Springdale, that there had to be a better way to procure things. And I went and told our mayor, I said, this does not make any business sense. All we're, all we're doing is having, uh, our Parks and Rec director, who does a fantastic job at his programming and, and running our Parks and Rec facilities. We've placed a, uh, an unfair burden on him to know the specs on turf and lights. And how I found that out was, Mark was walking with me through the Parks and Rec Center. And so I introduced him to our Parks Director, Parks and Rec, and, uh, he said, what kind of turf are you getting in? And Chad said, well, I don't know. And, uh, he said, well, are you gonna use coconut beet or rubber pellets in your turf as infill? And Chad said, I don't know. And then I started realizing there's a disconnect here. And we've asked our Parks and Rec director to know all these specifications on turf and lighting, even though they're not in that industry. So the business background in me started thinking through a process, how as a city, we could open bids or we could go buy our turf and lights off the buy board. But I don't know that those are the, the most economical avenues for us to pursue. Because in my background as a business owner, I would negotiate everything. And cities are not positioned to negotiate. You either have to bid things out or you gotta buy it off the buy board. Or Arkansas, uh, code fourteen fifty-eight three oh three says that you can waive bidding if it's not practical or feasible. It's not practical or feasible for us to spend more money than we're supposed to. So I put this theory to the test, and I hired, I can't do business with the city of Springdale, so I hired Mark and his consulting firm to come in and help us negotiate the best deal. And at the end, we would determine that it's not practical or feasible if we could save money. So the original quote that we got from our Parks and Rec director for turf was six and a half million dollars. So I called Mark and I said, what do you think we can get this turf for? He said, I think we can get it for four and a half million dollars. And that was just off his relationship in the turf industry, which he had worked in before. Uh, so after hearing that, I said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do a proof of concept here through your consulting firm. We're gonna get with the Arkansas Municipal League and find a way that we can negotiate this. So at the end of the day, we got the turf for three point six million dollars through our negotiations, and we were, we ended up waiving bidding. But it was because he was able to go to these turf companies and, and talk in volumes of turf. Because once you, once you're talking millions of square feet in turf to these companies and say, we can bring you these different cities and, and purchasing turf, all of a sudden the price goes down. As the city of Springdale, we can't call them and say, give us a price on three million dollars worth of turf, uh, square feet of turf. We can just say our three hundred thousand square feet. So we're able to project how many square feet of turf or even lighting of what we're gonna get cities to come purchase to that company, and it drives the price down. So Springdale got our turf for three point six million instead of six and a half. We also got our lighting, instead of paying two point eight million, we got it for one point nine million. So, uh, at the end of the day, the city of Springdale saved a lot of money, and we've been talking to cities since then. We just did that this, a few months ago. And so we have started this company. We're in talks with several cities right now, driving the price down. And we just feel like business has a role in government, uh, and it's, it's to get a fair and equitable price for things. And sometimes government overspending isn't just because people are, are spending money irresponsibly. Sometimes companies know those government contracts are a lot of money, and the price is way up there. So, uh, we use our negotiating power to come in, negotiate the best deal possible. Give you a quick example, uh, we, we were talking to a city in northeast Arkansas. They gave us a price of P O on a light that they were purchasing for their city, and it was two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And once we told this other lighting company how much we could, how many lights we could purchase, we got the price down to just under two thousand dollars. And they're talking about buying three hundred of them. So you can see there's substantial savings. So what we're going to be doing is going in and waiving the bidding on that. And when you have a procurement consultant, that is what allows them to go negotiate on your behalf. Just like if you, if you have a building project, uh, we saw a nice library building as we came in. If you hire a construction management as professional services, they go out and do the negotiating on the city's behalf. And then they give you a guaranteed maximum price. You enter into a contract. It's similar to what we do. As a procurement consultant, we will go in, negotiate the best deal that we can find. If you want us to, we'll bring the companies in and do interviews and have them submit proposals. But we will give you the best opportunity that you can have as a city. Most professional services, and I can name a list, whether it's architect, engineer, uh, appraisers, the list goes on. They make more money the more money you spend as a city. We have inverted that process. The way that we make money is we give you a price that we think we can get it for, and then anything below that, we share the savings with the city. And I'll give you an example with Springdale. Mark was able to go ahead and, and say, I think I can get this for two million less than what you've already, uh, received as a quote. So anything under that two million dollar price, they were, the city of Springdale split fifty-fifty with Mark and his consulting firm. So the way that we would make money is the better off we negotiate the deal for you. So we make money when you save money, but we'll give you a guaranteed savings on the front end. So, um, the, the way that a city can do this, though, is you have to amend your ordinance. This is what Springdale had to do. We have to add procurement consultant to your list of professional services. So you, every city should have a list of professional services in their ordinances, architect, engineer, appraisers, the list goes on. We would add procurement consultant by amending your ordinance. Once that's done, and, and I can tell you, we've already kinda done some work. Uh, we came and visited about the park updates for, uh, from your bond. Um, we kinda did some aerial. We, we know that some prices have already been given to you, and we, we already know through our research that we're gonna be able to save the city substantial amounts of money. And so one of the great things that we do in our contract with you, um, just like if an architect would charge seven to ten percent, we have a two percent fee. But what we do is we wrap that in to whoever wins the contract. So even though the city of West Memphis, in our contract, it would be two percent of the total, whoever wins the bid, X Y Z turf company, they would have to reimburse the city of West Memphis the amount of money that you hire us for. So that money would go back into your fund. Um, so we know that you have a bond that's passed. I know there's timelines on bonds. Uh, with the city of Springdale, we have to, we have to be judicious in our time to get those projects done. My goal is to save you as much money as I can in your bond program for your parks and recs so that you'll have money left over to do more projects. That's my goal. But in order to do those things, we have to amend an ordinance to allow us to do our work.
All right, uh, council members, uh, any questions? Sit down.
Mayor, if I could add, we're not proposing a contract today. All, all this does is opens up the opportunity for you to consider a contract with us in the future.
All right, well.
There was motion second to approve.
Well, call, call the law.
Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Muhammad?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray? Counselor Wiegles?
Yes.
Uh, we have ten, um, out of ten, so it passes. Thank you all, and indefinitely we'll move forward.
You bet. We, we've also sent a, a copy of our, uh, request for qualifications that we sent out as a city for this professional service. Uh, and so once the city sends that out, we will submit, and I brought it, our statement of qualifications that we'll make available to the city. And once that is, uh, approved, we can, we can come back and visit with you about our contract proposal.
Thank you, thank you. Miss Clay, what's that number, the ordinance?
This is the ordinance resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry. Ordinance number two-six-six-five.
Two-six-six-five, all right. City attorney, can you go to O two, please?
Yes, O two is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
Can I pause to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading with a motion and second?
So moved.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
May I pause to suspend the rules and get it on its third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's on the third reading.
Third reading is of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
It's been read for its third and final time. Can I get a motion and second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I know it's been talked about several times, what we pay for the mosquito spray, everyone's good with the price. Hearing now, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you get that ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number two-six-six, two-six-six-six.
That number is twenty-six-six-six. Oh, this other ordinance down here, can I get a motion and second to table it?
So moved.
Indefinitely. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled indefinitely. Permission request, uh, we sort of dealt with it just a little bit earlier, but this is permission for the mayor to execute an option to purchase agreement. And that was the, the fee, the two thousand.
Well, it's five percent.
Yeah, five percent.
Uh, it's gonna be around that twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollar mark.
Yes.
According to Mr. Bowman.
I saw, we, I guess we just say five percent and.
Yes.
Let me get the number.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Here was something else that's been brought to my attention that I didn't bring up, that I wanna see. Can we add so we can have some discussion and if this council feels that they wanna move forward, whether, uh, they could. So can I get a motion and second to add it to the agenda?
So moved.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'm, I'm not familiar with this. Uh, I know about this, I should, but I know the fire commission, uh, was addressed with this a few weeks ago, and it was dealing with the fire department, uh, air packs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, um, Chief, will you come forward, please? You, you and Chief May, I think both of you have the information forward. And another, um, the, the fire commission was once talking about it, so I didn't know how y'all decided to wanna handle it or not handle it or.
Yeah, the issue with our air packs kinda came up. We were doing a live fire training exercise at our new training facility. And one, the air packs malfunctioned. And what we found out, our air packs are outdated now, outdated now. And just for clarity, the air packs are the things you see the firefighters carrying on their backs. What it is, we take the oxygen from out here and we take it into hazardous, toxic environments. And when those things start, starts to malfunction, it causes a problem for our firefighters. Uh, Chief May was on the scene. He's our training officer. He'll tell you a little bit about what actually happened that caused us to bring this issue before you all.
Thank you. The, uh, the air packs currently in use are approaching eleven years old. As you can imagine, they have a lot of wear and tear, and, uh, of, they're really the most important part of our personal protective equipment. They're our respiratory protection for fires as well as hazmat scenes and in confined spaces. Uh, we were working on a plan to replace these next budget year. But, uh, there's been a rapid decline in the serviceability of these air packs over the last three months. And it culminated in November to an incident where one of our members was exposed to smoke and heat, uh, in our new training facility. Um, since then, we've had multiple issues with them, even, uh, this past week, we had a fire where the regulator was starting to leak at a fire scene on West Barton. It was still able to be used by the member. I went and personally replaced that regulator, um, on that air pack, and the replacement regulator, which was in our repaired pile, uh, was immediately starting to fail as well. So it has to go back in the repaired pile. They're just obsolete. They're to the point where it's just, uh, not fixable. And, uh, the current air packs that we have are not able to be replaced at the, at, at what they were, that we have to upgrade as well. So, uh, it, it's just, it's getting a little bit scary for our folks to be able to do their jobs at this point and know that they can be safe inside of these fire situations.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we took it before the fire commission, uh, and, uh, Councilman Kat had told us to go out and maybe see about getting some bids and see what kind of quotes we come up with, and we've done that. And I just wanted to see if you guys were going to approve us to be able to get some air packs so these guys can get their job done.
I know that, uh, I was updated somewhat in, in what I was told, that I think Chief Clay got two bids.
Yes, sir.
And what there was, the, the cans are still good for five years, but.
Yes, sir.
All the packs needed replacing as soon as possible, you know, to keep our firemen and fire, firewomen safe. So I know you all gonna, given that, that amount of money.
Well, I know when the twenty-twenty-three commission brought this to the council's attention, you know, told you it was gonna be around five to eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, spoke with Ms. Perry, of course, coming out of the cap outlay about how to fund it. It was my understanding she had the funds available, and I understood the bids had been in.
Well, the, uh, I will say, I will say that the, uh, twenty-twenty-four fire commission, um, we talked in depth about this particular issue, and the funds are available, according to Ms. Perry, uh, to purchase. So, um, I mean, I don't see anything but a green light to go ahead and get it done because this is a very, I guess.
Well, definitely, if you all give me permission, I would look at the bid, take the, the lowest bid and see what's the best bid for you all based on you all's recommendation. And if the councilman is, uh, when you all have given me permission to go ahead and proceed, then I will go ahead and purchase those, uh.
So put a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead. Miss Harris, second? All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's passed. Thank you.
Just a second. You guys did a very good job of it with fire. Actually, I talked about all of that. And I saw the praise people gave you guys because you did such good. You took care of them.
Yeah, we're always very proud of the men and women that take care of your folks, yeah.
We got a few more things that we need to talk about. We still got a real quick executive session that I need to go through with you all. But committee reports, who else, man?
Budget man.
Police, budget?
Fire, fire met, Fire Commission.
Mayor, before we go to the meetings, we need to add something else on the agenda.
Okay, let me get the committee report for the budget, fire, police, public works?
Uh huh.
Who else? A and P?
Parks met, but we don't have a report.
Okay. Okay, what about chamber?
Fire, you heard the meet of our conversation, but we did not have a quorum, so. And Assistant Chief Clay is not here, so we're going to pass.
All right. Ms. Harris, Councilwoman Harris. What did you want to add to the agenda?
We need, Public Works, we need to add the gravel truck to the agenda for be approved by us so they can go in and get it.
I have one, I just saw that today. I did have one question about the knuckle boom truck that we want to do, that's being asked. We have a hydrogen truck that's not being used down there. So I'm just wondering, you know, before we spend 250,000, shouldn't that truck be in operations first?
Is anybody here from Public Works?
Do we have to reconfigure it to become a gravel truck?
No, it's a gravel truck. It's one that Mrs. Hicks had got the grant for, but I guess someone just don't probably, I guess, like to drive. I don't want to speak out, but we got one down. So I'm just looking at for the money, Paul, why?
They didn't want to buy one, they just want to lease it.
No, I'm just saying, I understand, I understand the part, but we got a truck that's down there that is not being used.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I would ask that you all, just for the next council meeting, let me get some more information, and then you all can find out. I can be able to properly inform you all on what's going on with that truck, and then I'll break away.
That'll work.
Well, I would like, actually, Councilman, if it's any way possible, we need to be at these committee meetings because just like with the Fire Department, only had two people there. But if it's any, there's times I know you won't be around, but it's very important for us to be on these committees. All right? My gripe.
All right, budget?
Yes, sir, Budget Met. One of the primary focus we discussed was the long-term building aspects of what needs to be looked at over the next two, five, 15 years. Of course, briefly talked about a police department, Fire Department. What do we want to do with the old Bonner building? And then what do we want to do with City Hall at some point? We need to look at putting a skeleton building out there in the North Industrial Park to get that fire rating down, and maybe out there towards the Smucker's area. And then we still need to look at how we're going to handle the building out towards 147. You know, again, that's not something we need tomorrow, but it may be something we need, it's going to be a 20-year project. Going to just start doing some long-term planning. And wanted to meet with the administration and start laying some stuff out just in case it's something we need to put on the ballot for the November election.
Okay. That concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
All right, fire?
Fire, I just made the comment that the meat of our conversation, our meeting this week, last week, was what the chief and this training officer just said, so.
Okay. That concludes your minutes?
That completes me up.
Did we say Public Works? Public Works?
I've got it.
Oh, okay.
The Public Works Committee report. The Public Works meeting was called to order at 12:00 PM on March 5th, 2024. The committee members present were Chairman Helen Harris, committee member Charles Whelis, James Holt, Public Works Director Danny Montgomery, Sean Reinhardt, and Counselor Wayne Crum was a visitor. Above minutes, the minutes from February the 5th, 2024 were approved. Old business there was, now new business that the committee discussed leasing a grapple truck for one year. Fleet report, front load road, front end loaders, four is optional, and none are down. Rear end loaders, two optional, none down. One-armed bandit, there's three, and no down. Grapple trucks, we got four operational, and none down. Public Works Department has a new sweeper coming in, they also need a new grapple truck. Recycle totals, total collections was 7,700 pounds. Garbage trash sanitation collected 114, 1498.52 tons of garbage and trash. Tires sanitation picked up 720 that were discarded. Cars, there were two purchased. Stolen carts, there were four carts stolen and replaced after the customer filed a police report. There was no engineer report given, no code enforcement, and no adjournment. At that time, we adjourned.
All right. I think I heard that the police minutes were ready.
Okay, I can tell you, you didn't have a qual.
Okay.
So they are too prescient, like, they are so aware that they are concentrating on erratic driving, trying to make ourselves safer. And they are looking at hiring a grant writer because there are many grants out out there that we can be taking advantage of. And then they asked for my release, our radios are being prepared as I speak, and they should be online by eight.
All right. The personnel meet?
Personnel meets next Tuesday.
Next Friday, Tuesday?
Email, I said Friday at noon. But I've been out of office three, four days. No, Friday at noon, you will have the agenda. Okay. And Tuesday, next week, was the meeting over at the utility. I've been in and out of office. I understand.
Were there any other committees I may have overlooked?
I'd just like to add something there, too, on Public Works. The reason they have to write police reports because people moved from the resident, that they were building, and someone steals the garbage container.
Okay.
They have to have a police report to turn in before they can supply another container there.
Okay, okay. I'm pretty much going to go through what I have on the agenda, then we'll make the executive session since we have to go into the conference room, make that the last thing. So the people here don't have to wait if they don't want to. But I still have to come and give y'all an explanation. I just wanted to first say, on this morning, our city done another excellent job. I want to commend our West Memphis Police Department, our West Memphis Fire Department, our A and P Department, our City Shop, our Community Outreach Department, the Arkansas State Troopers, the Highway Patrol, Marion School, as well as the Creighton County Sheriff Department. You know, this morning, we had a Greyhound bus coming through our city. And unfortunately, the driver had a seizure on the interstate, which had submerged the bus, it hit the rails, and it crashed in the door. And I think our Fire Police had to come in through the window to help get him to the hospital, as well to get some of the individuals out. The grace of God, besides the driver of the truck, he was the only one that really had any serious injuries who had to go to the hospital. But I think everyone else was pretty much okay, besides the little shock of having that wreck. And I'd just like to thank our chief here, our major back there, who done a wonderful job, our Fire Chief, who definitely there, and EMS Chief, who done great jobs. Just all of them worked together with our Sheriff, Creighton County Sheriff. And also, Creighton EMS done a wonderful job, as well as helping provide more ambulances for the other victims that needed to be seen, to make sure they was okay. Then Mr. Jim Jackson with A and P, they reopened up the Eugene Wood Civic Center to allow the people that were waiting on the bus to come. And it was over to be over there, as well as our Community Outreach Department, added water and different things that they needed. Our City Shop came to help with the bus to get it up. Lateral were the record company, B and D Record Service was able to come and move the bus. Greyhound was great because as soon as Marion School bus got all those individuals over here, it wasn't less than 10, 15 minutes, I think. Greyhound had a brand-new bus over here. Most of the people got on that bus, and they were actually going to Memphis. And the grace of God, that the guy, and I hate to say it like this, got sick about two minutes before he did. Because if he'd have got sick two minutes later, they'd probably been on the Mississippi River Bridge. And hitting that wall would have been definitely more scary than what it was right there. And it was right there at the viaduct system, with the Crockerbear, is that, you know?
Yeah, right there, top of Missouri Street over there.
Exactly, top of Missouri Street. So it was just the grace of God that our men and women show, once again, that they was the heroes of this city. And they stood and they helped many, even kids on there, seniors, as well as young men and women that was there. So we done, I think we done a great job in providing safety and doing everything that we can to help them. Also, I called, and I went back from a call for some people that want to know the Rich Roll Bridge. Everything has completed. Everything has continued to be, it has been approved. Right now, this time, I went on James Barr to confirm to me that he have sent it out for bid. So, and once he give me that approval, I promise you all, I'll probably send it out. Well, you all would know that, so he can kind of get off of us. But definitely be moving forward, trying to find out if Rich Roll Bridge is better. We got, I'm telling you, within the next 30 days, we got a lot of great economic development projects that I will be announcing. And I'm very excited about that, which I'm going to say, I think one of them is going to be the biggest announcement ever in the state of Arkansas history. So that's going to be major for us. Also, on the 19th of this Monday, 11 o'clock, we will be doing the groundwork for the inclusion part. And we know that's the part for children with disabilities, mental, physical, intellectual autism, blindness, sensory, Down syndrome, the whole nine yards. So that's going to be good. Now, I know we got a lot of meetings, but I got a lot of crazy ideas, and I'm going to have probably five of my department here at this meeting because I'm going to throw it out. But it won't work if I don't have the whole council at this meeting. And the reason why I'm going to need the whole council, because I want you all to be considering some money that we may have to spend. I think we've been talking about a few things, you know, through some council people just, you know, after commission meetings, but I have another idea as well. But I definitely want to hear what your idea, or if there's a better way of doing it. You know, but definitely we got to address the issues. If we don't do nothing, well, the mayor has given you all what we need, so you all would know. So definitely, I want to get a meeting for that. I don't know what would be the best day, whether we can, I know we got a couple of work sessions that we got going on, and we can get past that. So I'll be calling for a think crazy meeting because I got some crazy ideas that I want to give you all to consider. Were there anything else, anyone that want to add?
Yes, I have something I'd like to say. Mayor, I, I'm 73, I'm a senior. I love, I love everybody, but seniors and children touches my heart, okay? I know seniors need a place to go, okay? But the Roberta Jackson Center is for the community. I just felt like I didn't want it taken up because it's for the community. The seniors program they have come from Jonesboro, come down here, and they get it at a real low price, the building. And they've taken up over half of it now. When my, when the people in my community want somewhere to go to have something, have a repass, or have something there, if they lock the doors, they can't use the bathroom inside because they got the other half of the building. Now, since it was done like it was done, it got the other part of the building. Now, I don't feel like that's right for the people in the community to have to suffer because these people want to come in and get the building that can afford to build a building, can afford to build a building.
Yeah, what's the money?
You know, I tried to explain that to the council, but I know some people don't, it's not in the, it's not in the community, so it don't bother them. But it bothers me because Roberta Jackson struggled and did things in our community for us. She should be recognized. High Tower Park, they want to give it away, too. People that struggle for us in our community need to be recognized in our community. And that's why I do what I do. You know, I'm not, I don't try to make a show for nobody. I'm not a shower, I'm a doer. And everybody, I like to curse, I'm sorry, but everybody know me, know I'm a doer. And I do for my community, I work for my community, and I work hard. And that's why I want to, I'm a senior. Yeah, I know what we need because, hey, I'm limping, you know, I'm over 70. So, yeah, I know what we need. And we need somewhere good for them to go. But I didn't want them to take our building for our community and use it for that. You know, that's just it. A business coming out of Jonesboro, you said it yourself, they take money out of our community. They don't bring money into our community.
They sure don't.
They don't, they don't bring a quarter in our community, you know? They got a few people that's working, making a little money, but that's it. This is for, this is ours. Now, and I don't, I don't do this often, I don't make a show. And I'm not making a show, I'm taking what I feel from my heart.
Right.
You know, and I'm, you know, and that's the way it's going to be for the next four years. If I'm here for another four years, I'm going to do the same doggone thing. Now, because I feel like it's there for, for our, you know, I had somebody talking to me about putting the program in there for disadvantaged children. Okay, I can see that in our community, and we got disadvantaged children. Thank you for giving me a minute, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Monday.
I agree with you, Mr. Monday.
I would like for the council to really, really think about some of the streets in Ward, too. Going back to Ninth Street, Tenth Street.
Oh, yeah.
Eleventh Street. There are no sidewalks, there are ditches. And to add on to that, even going, coming from 25th and Polk, from Jackson, wonder.
Welcome.
From Wonder Jr., going back to probably about 19th Street. And I was riding that road this morning, and it's, that road is in terrible shape. And you did ask us about some roads that need to be fixed.
Well, let me, let me, in your walk of West Memphis, it's going to fix from 25th to 20th Street, add new street and several, so I understand, but that part is in.
I knew that's already in the works, but even going back to the streets I talked about. But, you know, we have buses, school buses that ride Polk Street. And they're dipping and, you know, but I really would like for this council to start thinking about trying to work on some of the streets in that area. Even, even replace them, like they've done from Seventh on up to, what, 15th? Yeah, 15th.
Yeah.
In the 100 block. Yeah. So, so I'm asking the council to start thinking about that and looking for funding where we can really make a difference, can really make a difference.
Where do we start?
So let's just start thinking about it, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I need to get the dates and times. I keep getting calls, people asking what date and time that certain meetings are. And so, since you guys have met, can you just, the chair, tell me real quick what days you're, like the budget?
Fourth Thursday, at noon.
Then Fire?
Fire meets the third, or the fourth, Tuesday at noon, for the Chamber.
Third, third or fourth.
Third, I meant, third, third Tuesday.
It's twelve o'clock on Tuesday. Who meets? A and P? Parks and Rec? And H R?
Personnel, uh, my understanding is that they will be meeting, uh, it'll be this coming Tuesday, so I guess it'll be the s- s- second Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
At noon?
At noon, at the, uh, utility commission.
Is that all? Thank you. Actually, want to do, I'm gonna take a five-minute pause, we're gonna go to executive session, we have to speak about our current employee, and it can't be public. If you all give me five minutes, I'll come in and give y'all the explanation, so we're just gonna adjourn. Yes, can I get a motion second to go to? All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll be right back. City Attorney?
Yeah, I got to get unmuted. What's up?
Uh, uh, we just trying to see if you still, we getting ready to start back the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
I think we got a call. Oh, well, yeah, everyone come back in. All right, this is the public work, and when we do an executive session, I have to come in and give a reason of why we did, and what we did. We had to discuss, uh, some of the, uh, personnel matter within our H R, and we was able to handle that. So at that point, I'm gonna ask you all, can I get a motion in second to restart the meeting?
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we back in our meeting. Uh, we went through committee reports, I had no appointments, I had no presentation as mayor. Uh, I think I spoke through the announcements, uh, we had no citizen requests, so at this time, at the end, a motion in sec, uh...
Second.
Uh, all the paper?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, yeah.